This is the opening of the meeting of the planning board of the town of Mount Desert. August fourteenth, August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. My name is Tracy Keller and I'm the vice chairman. Bill Hanley, our regular chair, is unable to make the meeting. So I'm standing in Steve Ethan's place. I'd like to introduce other members of the board. To my far right is Alan Kimberly and Gail Marshall and Ann Dalton and Daniel Burke. And I guess the first thing on the agenda is approval of minutes.
Could I, could I, yeah, first move to make Daniel a voting member for tonight's meeting?
I'll second that.
I assume has, have you been sworn in?
Yes. We go.
Right. All those in favor?
All right.
Congratulations.
First meeting.
We're all in this together.
Yeah. So the meeting minutes were from the meeting of July twenty-ninth. And I was there and was here, Gail, Alan, and Bill. I move approval.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Then now our our subject of the evening is an application of by Dodge Point LLC with agent Tim Brochew from Haley Ward. And we have a letter of approval for your representation. The location of the property is twenty-nine Dodge Point Road in Seal Harbor, tax map oh-one lot seventeen, Zone Shoreland Residential two SR two. The purpose is a reconstruction and replacement of a non-conforming structure. This evening, we had a site visit at four-thirty and who would like to give a description of the site visit?
Oh, we've visited the site and fortunately it didn't rain on us. And it's a older structure, very close to the water with a hard granite shoreline. And I would imagine that as it says on the plans that we have, it is extremely close to the twenty-five foot setback, but I, I guess we are past this twenty-five foot setback. Which is good for this. And that's pretty much it. It's an older structure that I guess wants to be replaced with a new structure. Same. Uh, somewhat the same foundation, but not as high and less square footage.
Anybody else something to add?
There, we're going to retain all the trees and vegetation that do, that does exist around the thing. Had some storm damage, part of the porch was, was lost in the last storm, but most is still, still there. Sits on a very firm foundation. Big rock ledge.
I'm, I'm going to just read into the record of the sections four point three, non-conforming structures. And and to two sections that apply for this meeting. The first is section four point three point six reconstruction or replacement. Any non-conforming structure which is located less than the required setback from a bodied water, tributary stream, wetland, and which is removed or damaged or destroyed regardless of the cause by more than fifty percent of the market value of the structure before such damage. Destruction or removal may be reconstructed or replaced, provided that there is a, the permit is obtained within eighteen months of the date of said damage, destruction, or removal, and provide that such reconstruction or replacement is in compliance with, with the water body tributary stream or wetlands setback requirement to the greatest practical, practical extent as determined by the planning board in accordance with section four point three point five. An appraiser must make the determination of market value as defined of the structure. In no case shall a structure be reconstructed or replaced so as to increase its non-conformities. If the reconstructed or replacement structure is less than the required step, is less than required setback, it shall not be any longer, larger than the original structure, except as allowed pursuant to sections four point three point two above, as determined by the non-conforming footprint of the reconstructed or replaced structure at its new location. If the total footprint of the original structure can be relocated or reconstructed beyond the required setback area, no portion of the relocated or reconstructed structure shall be replaced or constructed at less than the setback requirement for a new structure. And then we also have to consider section four point three point five relocation. A non-conforming structure may be relocated within the boundaries of the parcel on which the structure is located, provided that the site of relocation conforms to all setback requirements to the greatest practical extent as determined by the planning board or code enforcement officer. If no case, if no case shall, in no case shall a structure be relocated in a manner that causes the structure to be more non-conforming. So Tim, would you like to present your project to the board?
We need to talk about your bodies.
Oh, yes, I, yes, absolutely. Sorry. Hold on. I have to set forth that the butters were notified. There are four, four parcels that was received notification. And I see the date of the notification was July thirtieth. And also that the, the advertisement for the, this evening's meeting was published on Thursday, August first in Ellsworth American, Mount Desert Islander, Republican Journal, and the Courier Gazette.
Should we confirm conflict of interest?
Oh, yes, yes, that'd be good. Does anybody here on this board have any conflict with hearing this?
No.
Oh. Good. Okay, now that those things are away, please proceed.
Correct, I am Tim Brochew with Haley Ward. And this is Brian Rayback, who's our attorney and judge's focus, who is on rep for the owners of the property. It was great to have everybody there at the site walk. It's not often we get the entire board there. We walked around and got to see, you know, basically, you know, the character of the site and walked on the front deck and looked around the house, which was really good. So I'll just basically kind of summarize a few things. A lot of this is included in your package. They also brought some full-size maps, so that we get into the discussion. You know, we can, we can point out things that they have needs clarification on. These existing structures, a two-and-a-half-star, a single-family residential dwelling. It's currently located just beyond the twenty-five foot setback. We did a detailed survey of the property to determine the highest annual time line out there, which is where it's measured from the highest annual time is published by the main D P. So we're very confident in our measurements on where this building sits, which is just beyond twenty-five. And basically just slightly beyond the seventy-five, so most of it is located between twenty-five and seventy-five feet. And it is considered a grandfathered non-conform construction. And as we discussed a little bit on site, the applicant has looked at this building and considered renovation and fixing it up in place as it is, and then thought about, well, maybe what we could do is make this a little bit smaller and have a little bit less impact on the area. And that's what we're coming forward to board tonight to consider possibly taking the building down and applying for a building permit for any one-story structure. We've provided some general schematics with our application package, which shows the footprint, which is contained within the existing limits of the existing building and all the non-conforming directions, which is toward the shore. There is a slight increase on the back, both sides of the seventy-five feet. As you can see that, and I can also demonstrate on the plans. And it would also be about five and a half feet shorter in heights. Again, and the square foot area of the, the space in two and a half stories is significantly reduced as well. And the goal of the, this proposal is to preserve the existing shoreline area and the vegetation around there. I, we discussed on site a little bit about how access would be to this location and how generally the building would be taken down and a new building would be built in its place without any major disturbance of the existing trees. We showed you too, a lot on how we're cabling trees down, trying to make sure that we preserve what's there as well. And we also are going to try to use the existing foundation components to the greatest extent possible. We're not planning on any major blasting operations, and basically this would get set down top of the ledge that sits there right now. And I think that that is kind of a brief summary of, you know, the, the high points of it. You know, Brian may like to present a little bit in regards to some of our ordinance review and how we feel that we meet some of the regulations in that.
So thank you, Tim. I'm Brian Rayback from Pierce Atwood here for the applicant. I just wanted to talk briefly through how we were thinking through some of these ordinance provisions. Your town, like all main towns, has some pretty significant rules for structures that are in the shoreline zone. And so we set out, trying to figure out what are those provisions and how do we make sure we comply with them? The other thing I'll just mention, it's in the application, but and we alluded to it earlier. This is an older structure. It's actually built around nineteen hundred. So well before the current ordinances went into place. So that's what makes it legally non-conforming or what we used to call grandfathered. So generally, non-conforming structures may be reconstructed or expanded, provided they meet certain provisions in the ordinance. We can't quite do that here, though. There is another provision that says when you have an accessory structure, and this is accessory to the main house, that is located closer to the normal high water line than the principal structure, you cannot expand. So and the expansion of a structure is defined as an increase in the footprint of the structure. So we started with that as our, our first principle, that we could not make this any bigger. And in fact, as Tim has talked about, we made it a little bit smaller. The the other thing that comes up in the ordinance is that really drives, both when you're looking at the relocation and the foundation, is the provision that says whenever you have a new enlarged or replacement foundation, it is built under a non-conforming structure. The foundation and structure must be placed such that the setback requirement is met to the greatest practical extent. So that's the decision, I think, that requires the most input from the board tonight, that greatest practical extent test. And the, the ordinance thing goes on and says, here are the factors that the board should consider. And we tried to consider those in the application for you. And I don't want to spend too much time on them, but one is size of lot. As we pointed out, the lot is a little bit of an unusual shape. There's sort of a, a water side and then there's a landward side. And to, to use this lot in the way that it has been used historically, it's really that, that land, the waterward side, if you will, the side closest to the water that, that the, that the owners are focused on. We don't have, without dramatically changing the nature of the structure, its use, we don't have the ability to, you know, move it back onto the landward side of the, of the lot, we don't think. Slope of land is important in the, in the analysis here. The, as I think you saw at the, on the sidewalk, the footprint of the structure is sitting on a bit of a knoll that's maybe ten feet elevated above other areas. So if we were relocating, there's some amount of either cut or fill somewhere that has to happen. You know, if we push the whole structure back a little bit, for example, there'd need to be some, either cutting up the ledge or there'd be, need to be a lot of fill. And so that we think is pretty important because we're trying to avoid that kind of destructive activity in the shoreline zone. In addition, you may have noticed that the stormwater runs off of this site behind the house. That there's space there with the slope of the land for the stormwater and, and the house has lived, has survived there since nineteen hundred. So it's working so that you don't have that erosion problem. You don't have the flooding concerns that, that you might in a typical shoreline situation. Obviously can't ever eliminate that entirely. Don't pretend that you can, but being up on that knoll is an advantage for that purpose. Soil erosion is another factor. This is a big one in shoreline zoning. A big part of doing the design the way we are is intended to keep what vegetation exists. The trees are terrific and we want to keep those if at all possible. If they were to come out, it's likely that you have substantial erosion. It would be very hard to get new vegetation to take in that area just due to the nature of soils. Location of other structures is relevant. The, there are other buildings on the, on the property and it makes, that makes it very difficult. You know, in some of these cases that I work on, you know, you're on a lake somewhere and you're looking at a camp. Or if you're on a seaside lot, you have a situation where there's one structure and it's not always that difficult to just slide the whole structure, at least conceptually, backwards. You just push it away from the water. Here, there are other structures in the way of that, so that makes that a, a practical problem. I've already mentioned the, the tree issue. We don't want to pull the trees down if at all possible. And, and that has a couple of benefits. I mentioned it from an erosion perspective, but one of the purposes of shoreline zoning is actually to make sure that our coastlines and our shorelines continue to look nice from the water. There's actually an interest in what is the public seeing when they look back at the water? And that is another, one of the reasons that we'd like to keep the vegetation in place. And then lastly, I'll just mention, and maybe, maybe you know this, sometimes you consider septic in this analysis. Not relevant here because the, the system is on public water and public sewer, so we don't have to worry about that. So the other, the other issues, and thank you for going through the ordinance provisions because that saved me having to repeat them all to you. In, in short, I think what we're trying to do is design as best we can, a project that limits any additional impact to the shoreline zone. Yes, it's absolutely true that we'd like to stay in that location. It's a beautiful location. But we also think that moving this house, rotating it, pushing it back is going to be significant and in terms of the impact on the shoreline zone. So that's why the design is laid out the way that it is. So let me kick it back to Tim in case he wants to wrap up with anything else, or I don't know if you want to talk through the plans at all. To see those.
Yeah, these are all the plans that were included in your application package. And I thought that maybe hopefully everybody gets a chance to look at everything and has a lot of questions that we could probably jump right into and start going through it in, in that fashion.
Okay. Do you have any specific questions you wanted to ask? Is there anybody online? There's Maddie Martin, who is part of, is that?
Maddie's with us.
So, and would she have anything? Do you want her to contribute anyone?
No.
Nobody else here.
I have a question. There's no bedrooms in this building here.
No.
It's just what we see here.
Yeah.
So that's why this becomes an accessory structure rather than a residential. And so that does bring in four point five. So in some ways, it's, it's a change of use. It's so that means that we have to look to four point three point seven and see if there are any issues that the applicant needs to address because it's a change of use. But I, I do have, I agree that we're zeroing in ultimately on the practical what, and, and let me just say at the outset, I want to get to yes here. Okay, I want to get to yes, but I'm not there yet. And I'm going to need some help from somebody. I'll take it from wherever I can get it. I appreciate that you don't want to enlarge the footprint any. The footprint has moved a little bit in some places, so your definition of expansion is not increasing the total square footage. And this is forty square feet less. It does sort of expand in some directions and contract in others. So I don't know if that is considered an expansion or if it's simply a math problem. It's like for less, but it doesn't, some of them here when they didn't used to be. And that includes a little bit of the kitchenette, that includes a bit of the cupboard entry. I'm a little confused about the cupboard porch, I mean, yellow area that's shown on that there. And then there's something that comes off the covered back entry. I don't know if that's a little patio or landing. I don't know if that was a patio would be a structure, but good in the structure, so I don't, I don't know about that. So I have that question, but the other larger question I think have I, to me, when it, when the ordinance in this case needs to be construed in kind of a strict compliance manner. It's not, generally speaking, we want to apply the ordinance in favor of the applicant, just generally speaking, but when, but the goal of the ordinance is also to, to eliminate non-conformities. So we have to more strictly apply the provisions, for example, of four point three point six, four point three point five, as it pertains to the criteria. And I'm not yet persuaded that defining the structure as a shoreline cottage with views that can't be duplicated elsewhere on the site is a compelling enough reason to justify not having to move it back so that it's either not non-conforming or less non-conforming. We don't have a definition of a shoreline cottage, you know, a shoreline cottage. We have a structure and that's, yeah, if I were the owner, I'd want to be making the argument you're making. I mean, I get that, I, I get that. But our job is to apply this ordinance and the statutes. And so I'm not yet comfortable with how those fit together and I'm going to need some advice or some, some feedback on that. If I, do you understand what my concern is?
So, I think so. And I, I got to tell you, I think the main municipal association would be thrilled that you are thinking rigorously. Everything you said is exactly right out of their trainings for planning boards.
Page eighty-four and eighty-six.
You're, I'm three sixty-one.
Could I just answer initially? You said your definition pointing at me of expansion. Just to be clear, that comes out of your ordinance. The definition is, the term is expansion of a structure. And the ordinance says it is an increase in the footprint of a structure, including all extensions such as, but not limited to, attached decks, garages, porches, and greenhouses. So we've
Yes, but what I got confused by here is that it's been altered a bit. So in some places it's technically increased and in some places not, but numerically it's not increased. So my question is, does the sheer number control? Or is it the fact that it's been, there's a footprint, that's a, there's a new portion of this new footprint? Is that an issue?
That's my, that's my I, I guess my, my thinking is that the language is an increase in the footprint, not a change in the footprint or something similar. So I read that to mean it's just a math exercise of does the footprint get bigger, smaller, or stay the same? You can move it around a little bit so long as it doesn't get right. And we tried to move it in a way that, exactly, so that any time you were having one of those little bump outs, little yellow areas, they're going back away from the water was being pen.
Right, right, but still within the seventy-five feet.
Understood.
Right.
So the sentence I got stuck with when I first read through is if the total footprint of the original structure can be relocated or reconstructed beyond the required setback, no portion of the relocated or reconstructed structure shall be replaced or constructed at less than the setback requirement for a new structure. I don't know if that one sentence confines our thinking. Because we, you, and I agree, ultimately you want that to be where it is and they probably wouldn't move it, they would renovate instead. But is that a confining sentence in four point three point six that we have to? If it could be anywhere on that property besides where it is, we'd have to do that.
Can you point me to, just so I can follow your thinking a little bit better? Can you point us to the language?
Four point three point six reconstruction or replacement. It's the second paragraph, last sentence of the second paragraph.
If the total footprint of the original structure can be relocated or reconstructed, some page four point five, where is? Four point
Right, I think, I think there, they're saying if all of the footprint, if the entire thing can be put beyond the seventy-five feet, then you're supposed to do that. And I think what we're saying is we can't do that here in a way that feels any sense, at least to us.
Does it want or like is there
Right.
How does that get determined?
Right, that's, that's the issue. Again, again, I'm not arguing with the perception that this is, of course, where you'd want it. I, I totally get that. But I, we're constrained. And
And, and we understand that. I don't know if Tim mentioned this, but you know, if, if this can't be approved, they, they will keep the existing structure and renovate it, right? They're not, they're not interested in
Right.
where, at some other place for this structure.
Which makes sense.
And now that's not, that doesn't drive your analysis. I don't mean to suggest, but just so you understand that, that's how strongly they feel about their view of is it practical to move this thing back a little bit?
Right, absolutely. Right. Yes, and I respect that. I do. Kim, I'm one, if I could, Kim, I'm wondering if, if we've had similar situations like this. I'm wondering if advice of our council about how to interpret this. Either has happened in similar situations or might be useful in this case.
You guys have, not you.
Yeah.
On the board has made somebody reconstruct beyond the seventy-five of the setback because they were tearing the house down and then they were proposing this big addition on the building, of the reconstructed building. And there was plenty of room for them to move that footprint back and to have that addition that they were proposing. And the board made them do it.
Right.
It's one I can recall up the top of my head since being here.
But in this case, we're not having a big addition.
No, I don't think that's the issue, though. They want to reconstruct the building.
Right.
And it may be that what we're just missing is a more nuanced analysis of the site that would somehow help us understand how there aren't any other options. I mean, I get why you wouldn't want to take, again, I get why you wouldn't want to take any other options, but I don't know how far we can go.
I would also, if I may, just point out this concept of the practical difficulty concept. I, I would also, if I may, uh, just point out this concept of the practical difficulty concept. The word practical means what it does in everyday life, right? It, it involves admittedly some judgment. Of. Common sense, everyday things. Um, not everybody always comes to the same conclusion about what's practical and what's not. Um, that's put on your shoulders here, but in our view. It just doesn't make sense to move this thing back off of that null, to have to knock trees down, to try to. Engage in some new planting plan. You know, when you cut vegetation in the shoreline zone, you're supposed to replant. Not that easy to replant there in an effective way and it will take. Many decades before the trees get to where they are now. Um, we'd have to figure out how to deal with the stormwater that now flows behind the house, right? If you push this back. You're right in the path of all of that. And I'm aware, of course, of the, you know, the storms that have ripped through here the last number of years and. Um. There's actually an awful lot of work on shoreline stabilization that engineering firms like Tim's are doing these days. Because of that kind of storm. You know, we don't want to be in the path of that water rolling around behind the, the building, of course. And so then you have to build something else to manage that, whether it's firms or some kind of, you know, other. Hard structure, if you will, to manage all of that. Um, that's not good in the shoreline zone either, right? That's more structured, that's more construction. It's more potential for erosion, it's more vegetation that comes out. So we're trying to avoid that.
Right, I think. I mean, just push back a little bit on the concern about storm damage. Um. We get a good blow through there. Uh, if you're facing southwestern and a very exposed knoll. I could, I don't know whether they've ever had waves breaking up over that ledge before. I, I'd rather not be there to find out at the time. Um. But we all know that storms are becoming more.
Sure.
Aggressive. Um, and that, I don't. I'm not prepared to bet that's gonna slide on.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mean to suggest to you that it's impervious from storms in this location. I just think it's, it's stood this test of.
And we don't need to determine that.
You don't.
Our job.
I agree, I agree. But if you're thinking about, is it practical? To push the house off of that knoll and into the path of where water runs off. I, I do think one of the questions is, well, what do you do with all that water that currently runs through there? We don't think that's practical.
Are you talking about, I'm gonna ask a question, are you talking about water that's like immediately behind the house or down off that, down off the knoll?
Do you want, do you want to talk, show him what we've been looking at?
Like where the fence is now that we have to go around? Like, is that what you're talking about?
Right, that's what I'm thinking, right, right. So currently, my understanding is that the, the stormwater runs. Tim, you can tell me I'm wrong, but my understanding is the stormwater runs this way.
Uh, it, 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 it comes down through here and runs. Cause this, this is a higher burn right here, or in this beach.
Sure.
So this runs all this from all the bow turns down here. And goes this way and gets into this flatland area.
Right, cause there is quite a bit of, I mean, I know that there is vegetation that you want to preserve. But there is still quite a bit of ledge there that push, it would push the house. Further back, I'm, I'm, I appreciate your respect for the trees. I, 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 I'm not an arborist, but. I. I wasn't. I just think, I, I also think that actually the slot that you, you designated is, is gonna be a major piece of engineering to get. That entire structure out there and a new one in without actually.
Well, I mean.
Taking all of those trees out anyway.
When we, when we demo, it comes out in very small pieces.
Yeah.
You know, we've, we've done this type of construction many times before.
Yeah.
Time consuming. Is all it is, uh, but, you know, we take these things down in very small pieces, uh, walk it up through here. It gets put on trucks up here and then taken out. And basically, when you reconstruct this way, you bring it in in small pieces as well. There's no refabrication of, uh, wall panels or any of that. It's brought in, you know, piece by piece. And also, we have, you saw our construction site here.
Yeah.
We routinely crane over trees to this location.
Okay.
Uh, we were doing it right across the, uh. Cove right now.
Okay.
You've probably seen them. Sticking up in the air, uh, and you can reach over all of those trees without any trouble with an eighty time crane.
Okay.
So we can bring a lot of material in without having to make any major, uh, construction access road or having to. Uh, tear out much more than what's underneath this footprint here. And then, you know, trying to move it back into here too, we also have, you know, uh. Minimum setbacks between buildings on the site, so it can only come back so far as well. Which would put it basically on that back slope where we walked up.
Yeah.
Through, so we either have, we'd have to fill that up.
Mm-hmm.
To make it level enough to receive this past this line here, cause this would be our spot right here.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd probably have to bring that up about. Eight feet.
Mm-hmm.
To, to level it up. And then back slope it that way, and then now we've got. Drainage problems again, as Ryan pointed out, and, uh. And we lose all the trees at that point, and then. Probably with some of the peripheral ones now that they're exposed to all the wind as well.
Mm-hmm. And I agree that it may be practical, but I just can't get past the sentence that says if it can be. Not that we're judging practicality, but if it can be. However, it can be done, it has to be done. So maybe a drawing that has. That. Accurately describes the setbacks from the buildings and, and. It explores. Alter, whether or not there are viable alternatives to. Um. Again, I want you to bear in mind that I'm trying to get to yes, but I. But I.
For, for our certification, could you tell us, or me specifically? How practicality weighs in? I know it was read in an ordinance, so I know it relates to the conversation.
You have to comply with the setback requirements to the, to the greatest practical extent possible.
And how does, and?
And, and that. The, and, and that. I, I. Do, I would define that as. Is it physically possible to put this building? At least seventy five feet back on this lot? Is it possible to do that? And I, I'm telling you that my concern about. About the interpretation of it being a shorefront. Cottage. That can't be a shorefront cottage anywhere else. I, unless somebody. Educates me better. I don't see that as a justification that we can indulge. Because there is no definition of shorefront cottage in this, this structure. And there's residential structure and there's accessory structure, but there's no specific. Right to maintain. An incredible view from, from a shoreline, pre-existing shoreline structure. Um, that I think in the face of trying to. Bring properties into conformance and not perpetuate non-conformities. Except in certain circumstances, we. I'm, I'm hung up on that. I'm hung up on that definition.
No, I am too. I, I'm very empathetic to that, and that's what I'm trying to say. If, if the ordinance said. To the greatest extent possible. It would be crystal clear to me, uh, we wouldn't be here because it would be greatest extent possible, because it says greatest extent. Practical, that's why we spent the time doing the analysis.
Yeah.
The, the part about practicality that I'm looking to understand and, or to come to understanding with everyone here is. For instance, we mentioned the tree falling perspective we discussed with the owners and the arborists, they did analysis on it. We were there, they'd see some of the guy wire system that's up in the trees. So we learned that even during construction. The building and the trees have a symbiotic relationship. If, for whatever reason, we didn't want this building, the owner said, we're not gonna do the cottage, we're just gonna remove it. What we learned is that in very short amount of time, all those trees would be gone, and he, I think. Um, Brian said it would be very difficult to regrow trees, but the report we got from the arborist is actually impossible to regrow trees. We'd never get soil to take hold on that knoll. Without the trees that are there. So even if we were to take the house down, put soil in and try and plant trees. What we've experienced or what we see on that end of the island is, is a domino effect when the tree falls, when the tree falls, and then two trees falls and so on and so forth. So part of our analysis and the practicality of it was. If we, even when we reduced it. We only actually, we actually very specific about the amount that we reduced it based on what the arborist told us. As to, again, that symbiotic relationship they form, and so. When we looked at little things that could be there, big things that could be there, and we came up with a footprint that responded to the context and approached it. In what we thought was practical. That was our approach, and so that's. I'm also looking to, to, to determine that with you here, the difference between moving at the greatest extent possible, which is. Sounds like what we're discussing, that would be like, greatest extent possible is crystal clear. Push it back beyond setbacks. Practical seems a little bit. Subjective at, at best, and seems like it needs to take in. Account all the factors we are discussing.
But the underlying, first of all, it would be nice to have an arborist reporting the record. The underlying goal. Is to move towards conformance. So that's how we have to shade. Our. Analysis, so there's a, to the. Um. The side of the relocation conforms to all setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. Now. I think there are numerous factors. You've got, you, in the trees, maybe one of them. Um, I think the biggest one is whether or not the lot. The law, not a particular site, would accommodate an additional structure of this size in a, in a location that takes it back. Enough to get it out of. The setbacks. Um. Put in fact, that's that. Um. Now, I. I don't know if I have enough. Information to feel confident to make that decision. I. I'm not saying the information's not up there. Um.
How do we as a planning board determine? Practicality? That's what I'm struggling with, and I'm fairly new to the planning board. I don't understand.
We, we're all fairly new to planning, just put that on.
How we would define that. In relation to the word can, it can be relocation. That's a hard test.
Right, right, I think if we, so. Good, fair question. Um, one way. The ordinance tries to give you at least a head start. On defining practicality by listing those factors, size of the lot, erosion, slope. Those kinds of things are part of the analysis. Uh, I don't mean to suggest that that's the only information you could take in. In fact, I think you, you can use your judgment as other things that are relevant there. Um. I do think if, if you read the ordinance in that can language that you've landed on, and I will need to go back and. Wrestle with that a little bit and see it in the whole context and, and maybe circle back to you, but if you read that in a way that says. If you can ever do it. It renders this whole thing about practical difficulty, you're right. You've just written the whole provision out of your ordinance, maybe not intentionally, but that's the effect of it. If you read that one sentence to me. Hey, if you can do anything at all. Then. You have to do it. I don't think that. Makes sense. I don't think it, it, it directly conflicts with this idea of a practical difficulty test where. You have to look at the totality of the circumstances.
Do we have the practicality section in this paper that they do this, cause I don't.
Um, no, it's, it's in five, it's in four point three or five. Yes, uh, on, on page four dash four. Um. And then we do have to, and then as you've mentioned, we have the criteria. I mean, the size of the lot. Waste water is irrelevant, size of the lot. Um. Two point seven five acres, I understand, is within, outside of the setback. Total out, out of the six point three five percent.
The land portion of the property.
Right.
Which is basically, there's a portion.
And the potential for erosion, I, I think that may be a compelling argument. I'm just not sure that you're just telling me that there's a potential for erosion is. Um. Enough.
Would it be useful to have a report from somebody like a, an engineer that could explain that a bit more?
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Wrestle with that a little bit.
I mean, the slope of the land, it is under ten foot layers, but that ledge does proceed back quarter ways before you're back off that ledge. Is, is there enough space there to accommodate? I know it's trees, I know you've got the trees there. Um, is there enough space there to accommodate a structure and would it be outside of seventy five foot? I don't. Precisely know. Um. Uh, location of other structures on the property and adjacent properties, um, you, you've already determined where you want to put other property, other. Other, and, and other structures, and do those prevent? Does the existence of those structures, do they prevent any other location? Um. Septic again is not relevant. Removal replacement, but it doesn't say you can't remove vegetation. It does say if you remove it, you better try to replace it.
Yes.
And so maybe more information about. The inability to actually, I mean, I know legislation, I know it's fine, things on ledge, but I've seen some pretty ambitious landscaping projects. And that part of our zip code, and so I'm not. On the surface, sure, that there's actually nothing. Natural that couldn't, could be done there. I mean, I see some. Spruce of various sorts, or even look like maybe one of them has no waste spruce or something like that, which of course isn't native, but. Um, but I'm not an arborist, so. Um, and I think it's heroic that you're trying to say, you've got all that, it's impressive that you've got all that cabling. For those. I think those trees are challenged. Whether without the cabling. So, but that's certainly the end of there. Um. So my instinct. Is that. I guess I need some more. To get to that yes that I'm trying to get to. Without trying to be tedious, trying to not be tedious about it.
So, as, as well as, you know, if you're, one of your main concerns is the stormwater drainage. If you could, if you also had something to document. That. That'd be to your benefit.
Sure. I mean, this could be, we haven't heard from.
I, I see it as a, a grandfathered. Uh. Position. And on, uh, four point three point six. It says it may be reconstructed or replaced. So. I understand that. You know, if you're not able to, if we do not allow you to replace it. You'll just restore it. And, you know, with the restoration, you can, you know, change it somewhat. And. Looking at the building, I. I'm not an expert, but I know a few things. And I think it's pretty smart to replace it. You know, I, I love historical stuff. Uh, the yacht club. In northeast harbor, they're moving their structure. With their structures a little better. Uh, the Asta Co. I'm surprised they're saving that building, because that probably should have been torn down, but they're doing it. And so I think we would be within our. Realm to. Allow you to. Replace that with a similar building that is not larger.
But it has to meet the requirements of five, and that's. Then that's why we're hung up. And that's where you get into having to meet the setback requirements for any reconstruction to.
It's not being relocated, it's going in the same spot.
But if you read. Six, it says you can recon, yes, you can, you can read and can determining whether the structure, reconstruction or replacement meets the setback to the greatest practical extent. The planning board or, or should consider in addition to the criteria in section four point three point five. Above the physical condition and types of foundation present, we have to consider four point three point five. Criteria in determining whether or not the structure can be reconstructed or replaced. So it kicks us back to four point three point five.
Yeah.
Um.
It's like I said, it's not gonna be. It's basically the same footprint. If they're using.
Right, and it's almost entirely within the seventy five foot.
Yes, it is, absolutely.
Um. So it had, we have all these other. Challenges that we have to confront for shoreline zoning and our ordinance as a result. Challenges that we have to confront for shoreline zoning and our ordinance as a result. Fortunately, unfortunately. Anybody else?
Would it be? Technically within the same footprint, it's there. It's pieces out, oh.
I don't think it's the, the footprint isn't the biggest problem for me. The footprint is whether or not it's possible to be. Coming to not, coming to performance. And that's the, that's. And like I said, I think it, maybe if we had more data. We could figure that out in a way that. Meets their. Desires. Um. But if nothing else, I think we need to make a better record based upon. In order to do that.
I don't see it as a relocation.
It's not. It's not. But it has to comply with the requirements that are set forth as if it were in relocation. As the ordinance says. It's a reconstruction. Right, or replace it.
Yeah.
Especially not a reconstruction, it's a replacement, because it's actually a different structure, they're building that, it's a different use. This accessory structure as opposed to a dwelling. As I understand the plans. Because as you asked, there's no sleeping quarters.
What's the choose?
Yeah, just the presidential. I mean. Cars.
But what do we call, we don't have anything in ordinance that's.
Um, yeah, I don't know that we've actually. We haven't developed any major program and plans for it, but in general, it's a, uh. A structure with, um. You know. Living spaces for gathering and kitchen and a bathroom. And recreation. Kind of.
Got to determine yours, because you go on from principal to accessory.
Yeah, because it looks like it's going, I'm, I can, I can imagine this being an extended place to entertain. Right, and that's, and that's fine, but that places it in a different category, I think, than, than what it's currently in. It's got. A powder room and it's got no. Which I suppose qualifies as, as toilet facilities, um, but it's got no sleeping quarters. And so then that seems to kick out. I don't, it seems such as that's not what it's intended for. Which is fine, but it's just a different.
I. Thought looking at definitions was that. It's not an accessory dwelling, but it's an accessory facility.
Yeah.
I'm right, that's what we always intended it. Pretty incidental to a principal.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And so there are some different. Restrictions. Um. Well, I think those would only apply if we determine that this is an expansion, because you can't expand an accessory section for four or five. Well, yeah. Well, there's the change of. Yeah, that's just. Okay. I. I would suggest that we continue this and ask for the information. Suggest that might help. Flesh out the record. To allow us to. Right, I think. Because I think we're being asked to be fairly bold here about. And what we're doing, and I think that given the fact that it's in a nonconforming area. We're not entitled to do that.
I, I disagree disrespectfully a little bit. I don't think, I don't think what we're asking for is bold. I, I think it's narrow. Um, and I think we're asking for a, a, a small approval, not a big one, not asking you to make a big leap here. You keep. Using the word possible, and I'm wondering if in your mind, you're hooked on, it's physically possible to do something, therefore you have to do it. It, maybe not intentionally.
Right.
Right, I, I think, so. The practical difficulty concept has pluses and minuses. One of the pluses is. You get an opportunity to have some flexibility to make. Judgments about what makes sense. Now. I totally take your, your point, you are a hundred percent correct. That the point of zoning is to encourage informant. Like, I was joking when I said earlier, that comes right out of the main municipal planning training sessions. Uh, however, there are quite specific and detailed provisions around grandfathered, non, you know, legally nonconforming structures. Precisely because these things do come up and there's a fairness issue of saying to somebody. Oh no, I know it would cost ten million dollars to move your house and you'd have to. Knock over a, you know, another house along the way, but it's physically possible, so you can do it. I mean, if we gave Tim's office enough of a budget and enough time, they would design a bridge to the moon for us. Um, it's possible, I don't know how, I'm sure there's an engineer who could figure it out. And I know you're not going that far. I'm just trying to make a point that.
It probably always helps.
The practicality allows you some flexibility. Not to.
Right.
Not to do it willy nilly, we're not asking for a favor, right?
Sure.
We think it's, we, we really don't think it's that big of an ask. Um, we don't think we're putting you in a position where. You know, you're, you're subject to. You know, an appeal or something that, that somebody might, I mean, nobody's here, but, um. You know, so I, I apologize if we put you in a difficult spot, but that, that wasn't our thinking, it wasn't our intent.
No, no, it's, you can put us in a difficult spot, I, I, no, more difficult than any other, I mean. Um, I, I, I hear what you're saying and, and I recognize that it is practical, that practical extent. It's one of the reasons I keep coming back to the idea that maybe if we flush out the record.
Sure.
That that would help. Rather than just, well, we say, well, the trees aren't gonna work and we, you know, they're not gonna survive and you say this and you say that and, and water's gonna flow and. And yet, we don't have any. Thing that I'm used to seeing in the record. That confirms that. Um, and so if we look at these criteria. Um. And if we had some drawings about that showed. Well, the setback from that building and that building and that building makes it very difficult to put it someplace else and have some more information about. Erosion and. Um. And the veg- your concerns about the vegetation. Um. And I agree with you that it's important to also consider what it looks like from the shore. That I, you know, I'm, I'm not dismissing that, I. Um. So. That's kind of where I'm hung up at this point and. But look, if there's three moves to the board, I think this is all just all being two of two, so you should just vote to approve it, then.
I think a lot of the value of this property is that grandfathered footprint. And. That doubles the value of that property. And you know, not being able to use that grandfathered footprint. You know.
That has no bearing.
I don't think that is the issue at all.
I'm just trying to understand again, the practical. The section that says determining whether the structure reconstruction or replacement meets the setback to the greatest practical extent. Planning board or quote unquote, an official consider in addition to the section we've looked at thoroughly, four point three point five. The physical condition and type of foundation, it doesn't. Give us any other things to consider. Those are the two things that's listed here.
Well, plus four point three point five.
Well, right.
Yeah.
All of those things.
Yeah, yeah.
But in a, but. When we are considering. Greatest practical extent, we're supposed to look at the physical condition, the type of foundation present.
Right, now, and actually, that would be useful to have more information about that too. I mean, we looked at it and you said it's gonna remain on the pilings and. Um.
I mean, the physical condition of the building is not good, it's, it's proactive.
Yeah, not good to. I know it's not your fault, so I don't feel like I'm offending you.
My point is it doesn't say anything about. A runoff or the trees, it says the foundation. For me, I'm just reading what's in front of me here.
Right.
I want to get to yes and no. Does make sense, Alan, right, it does make sense.
But I just, I don't want to cut off the discussion in any way, because it's quite.
Yeah.
Useful to hear.
Yeah.
More information that is helpful to you. What I'm. itching to do is say, if it is helpful to you to have some more information, we would be more than happy to provide more information. And hopefully that. Helps you with your analysis. The, I don't want to cut off the discussion, because as you talk. These questions come up and I think Tim can tell you a little bit more about the foundation, for example. I think. Tim can tell us a little bit more about how runoff works on this site or erosion works. We could get an arborist. The arborist that has been to the site already, I think we could get a report that would help. Flesh out the record event, as you said.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, there is some, as we know, there are some pretty. Impressive. Runoff. Structures that can be. Built to accommodate a site that has a runoff issue, if that's what you need to address, for example, and so is that. Has that been considered in terms of? Possibly moving, and I know, I know you don't want to not get that, but. Again, I'm trying to figure it out.
I think, I think we could explain what, what those might be. Whether we could build them in the shoreline zone. Remember shoreline zoning is, the intent is not to build stuff there if you could.
Correct.
So it would be better if we didn't have to build some kind of underground drain filter. Uh, out there now. Tim's thinking I'm crazy, we wouldn't do an underground filter with a water table where it is here, but there may be some. Hardscape structure, if you will, that you might. Consider in a situation like this, that would be antithetical to shoreline zoning, because it's more structured, it's more building, it's more impervious. Um, but perhaps we can flesh that out a bit for you.
I mean, if I look at. I see you have, if you look at the elevations here where the site currently is, this is the one that we just got this evening, but, um. As soon as a ten foot. Are these ten foot elevation, what is, what's the scale here? I'm looking at this on the.
The contour line.
The lines.
Yeah, those are two footers.
Oh, two footers?
Yeah.
Um. So. I mean, that ledge, it looks like that ledge itself. Certainly extends. And you've got the seventy five foot line. I mean, it's certainly lower. But. Um. But there, it looks like there's an elevated space that's outside of the seventy five foot line. It's. Of course. Do I assume correctly, I don't like to make assumptions, but do I assume correctly that one of the gets for you for bu- building this replacement structure? Is that when the main house is all done, it's gonna be able to look over that. Roof in a better way. It's not, it's not gonna be an issue.
Not really, the, the, the positioning of, of these buildings here, the view is through here.
Oh, okay, thank you.
It's not, not through this at all.
Okay, good, thank you.
It really doesn't have any, either, neither one impacts either, either other.
Okay, good, thank you. Kim, can you think of anything we're missing that would be helpful to know about? To further analyze this?
Um. No, I mean, you're lucky, you gotta look at the lot as a whole, I mean, you gotta look at session four point three point five. Um. You just gotta be convinced of that, that this can't be relocated. I mean, you know, setbacks are very practical and sound.
And I think the argument is, it can be re- relocated practically. I think that that's really, you know. You, you technically can relocate any, as long as you get enough land, you can relocate, relocate any building. But is it practical? To do that, I think that that's what we're trying to in our presentation is to convey that, you know, we don't. Feel that it's practical to move it and to utilize it as a combination. Now, I guess, you know, one of the questions came up about the expanding the footprint slightly beyond the existing footprint, even though we're. Expanding, uh, beyond seventy five in that location, I mean.
Right.
If, if we were to, you know, and say, all right, we'll stay within the exact limits of the existing footprint, would that? You know. Make any additional. Difference here in that manner.
I don't, well. Could that just? That just raises a separate issue that we haven't really gotten into, and that would be whether or not it's considered an expansion of an, of a. And I'm not.
If we.
I'm not going there.
Right, that's why I was trying to address that issue of.
Yeah.
Expansion, if we just said, okay, we'll, we'll contain everything within the existing footprint, then. Uh, if everything is within the existing footprint, it could not be.
I don't think that disposes of the other issues, whether or not it can.
Right.
And, and. What I, what, what I'm confused by is what we, what we've done is articulated. A desire to leave this as a shorefront cottage, and if we moved it someplace else on the lot, then it wouldn't be the shorefront cottage with this magnificent. Broad view, granted. Granted. But I don't. But I haven't gotten to the place where I think that's dispositive for us. Uh, or, or can be dispositive to us. So to me. That. Doesn't. Factor into whether it's practical to be able to, not possibly practical. So, um. So, yeah, I think if you have more, I'm sorry, sorry.
So we're saying the same thing, I apologize. I, I think some of this additional information at least might help you with that analysis.
Yes.
Whether it gets you there, we would have to wait and see.
Right.
Um. But our intent is, is to. To use. The things that we're talking about here. In the context of shoreline zoning to say, practicality is not only judged by our, you know, our clients' interests.
Sure.
Um, when they're standing on the, on the porch, what does that look like? Obviously, that's terrific, right?
Yeah.
Um. But. What we're trying to say is there are good shoreline zoning principles. That are at stake here, that we do not want to violate, coming down trees, et cetera, right? So it's not just the selfish interest of the landowner, it's. Do we actually do more harm than good?
Yes.
If we move this thing, and our view is yes. And it's our job to convince you of that.
Right, and I respect that. I, I, I hear that and I, and I respect, I don't doubt that. Um. I'm just hoping that there's enough additional sort of. In the record kind of data.
True.
That, and if we've been. Clear enough about what. You. Would help us.
We've got a good. Idea of where we're headed. I'm sure Maddie's taking notes and I think you're taking notes and you're taking notes. I, I think so.
Okay.
Is there? Other questions you have? Other questions you have. That relate to. Soil types or, you know, other sort of traditional development.
Yeah.
Questions.
Yeah.
Would be. Wonderful to know what those might be, we could try to address those as well.
Well, I think those would have to be addressed in the question of whether or not there are other suitable locations.
We'll think broadly also on our end about what might, what we think might be useful.
I think it's also worth, yeah, I think it's also worth discussing, the part you just mentioned that we haven't made it to yet. That Tim mentioned, the expansion of the current footprint beyond. And to confirm what we're saying, so my role is to empower. This team to provide what. What I think is being asked for.
Yeah.
So. Uh, the brief history here is, property is purchased, owners fall in love with it. Building exists. We discussed, we had renovated place, reduce, love of the property, history of the property. Bringing on Brian and team. We follow a lot of practicality, many, many discussions around practicality, there were instances where this had, this was a residence, it still had multiple bedrooms, it was. Using the entire footprint, all sorts of stuff, and so our intention, again, was centered around that. Term practicality, which were all still a little bit unclear. And so the reason I focus on that is, if if there is a scenario in the future that I think I'm understanding here. There is a scenario in the future where all the things that we're referencing. That relate to practicality are produced in firm data, harbor support, shoreline drainage, alternate. Uh, significant impact to shoreline in order to move the building, all of those things that we've discussed here. But if they were on paper and black and white, then those would directly impact. The level of practicality that we're discussing here, as it relates to. What we're proposing, at which point. Those things would be in place to reinforce. Um, your standing and your decision.
Right.
And then we would also discuss. The the portion I just mentioned, the expansion. So as I think about this team, and whether a decision can be made here tonight, or if it's in the future. That's also part of it, so as we think about that reinforcing or. Uh, the practicality conversation. How, I'd just like to discuss really quickly that proposed expansion. Beyond or outside of the seventy-five foot, how further we have here, as that relates to, so we make sure if we don't decide this tonight, we come back, we have all the information to discuss.
Right. Right, and I'm telling you, I don't have an answer to the question of whether or not, because what what we're looking, as I understand it, what we're looking at is. The the changes to the footprint, and maybe this isn't the right math. The areas that are in blue are in, are outside the seventy-five foot, and the areas that are in yellow are in the seventy-five foot. So as I look at. The drawing. The existing.
That.
Yep.
The the existing one. You, the existing footprint. Does not include a wedge that's in the kitchen.
Right.
Correct. And, or much of it, like half the kitchen. And. That is a covered entry. And I don't know yet what. Over the side entry, there's something there on the ground, I don't know the dimensions. I don't know if it's patio, because if it is, it's part of the structure. And that's outside of the existing footprint, or maybe it's just a. Step down and landing, I I don't know.
Could I approach? Just for better understanding of your points.
Um, this thing, I think. Walkway and then.
There's a walkway and then bath, and then, yeah.
This would be the most. Is that many discussions I had, this was resolved. This being the most current. Okay, and this is, right, so this is a landscape path, and this is a placeholder for some version of. Maybe it's gravel, maybe it's not, it's it's just where you exit the building.
Yeah.
This, what we're demonstrating here is what we're asking for in. In a a fixed footprint. Um, I think that's a little bit confusing in the graphic there, but this is, this is just gestural towards landscaping to be determined. But your assessment here is correct, this is. All as a right outside seventy-five feet, this yellow is essentially what. In in the move towards practicality, what was suggested by the architecture and and whole team all together. To create a footprint. That's setback from the water, and in order to bridge, you essentially create an envelope that was also effective to build. Appropriate for the site, and just bridge the gap between. Expanding in a way that was conforming and moving away from the shoreline and connecting those pieces together, there's sort of an odd, as you were there, there's an odd.
Right, and so, and in, and in, and I recognize that as you're doing the map, it's forty square feet less. The footprint is forty square feet.
Right, yeah, yes.
And then.
Forty square feet less, and then.
I mean, total, and then, but then my question is. Is it? Is it, and. Is that disposable? Is that the only issue, or is it the fact that, or is the fact that you're actually moving part of the footprint? Enlarging part of the footprint within the seventy-five feet, is that? An issue?
It's beyond the footprint. So it's an expansion.
Yes, yes, it's an expansion. Even though the total square footage, once it's done, will be less.
It's good, yeah, they're adding more foot, can I go to the seventy-five foot setback that's not there right now?
Right. So.
I do think it gets a little semantic, and I only know just from. Different commissions, we we've been in front of another condition, so historic and observation, all those, so in general footprint, it's typically, and almost. Always been considered. Uh, not in relation to adding or decreasing, it is the sum total. So period, and so there's a, there's a shuffling of that that occurs, and this is really common in shoreline, really common historic. And so in this case. The footprint is a, is a singular point. And. The increase is whether you go beyond that number, so it is, it is a math problem, or less than that number. With this specific footprint, because we have the the odd chogs in the building, like what I was just saying, so that's just stringing those together, but then. Basically, in exchange for that, in the view of practicality, we look at that, and then thought, okay, well, we've done that, and so we've, we basically bridged these gaps in the building to make more cohesive structure. So then let's go ahead and pull some away from the water, so that that, we make sure that balances out, and from a binary point, we're never asking the board. For something other than moving away from the water, reducing footprint, always moving towards practicality, because again, that was our interpretation.
Right, and and I I respect that, but. But in theory, if that we are interpretation, say, well, we got two thousand square feet to do, or. Um, we're gonna do something that's a significantly different shape. All within shoreline zoning, but it's gonna be nineteen hundred square feet, so we're good. And I'm not sure.
As long as you don't increase the nonconformity, I think that's okay. Now, there may be some other provision I haven't thought of for your oddly shaped. I'm imagining, in your mind, you were drawing a very unusual nineteen, you know, nineteen hundred square foot, but, you know, we're pulling that light green, that's sort of.
Yeah.
Beautiful sea foam green, pulling that away.
Hospital green.
Yeah, there you go, you know, okay, sea foam, I'll stick with, uh, yeah, uh, pulling that away from. The shoreline, so the footprint doesn't get bigger, it does get reshuffled.
Yes.
Um, to be sure. Based on the definition, definitions of the ordinance, we didn't think that was an increase in footprint. Um, or rather, excuse me, we didn't think that was a, an expansion of the structure. Because of the definition in the ordinance that says that's an increase in footprint, and we looked at this and said, no, no, footprint is less. Reshuffled.
Sure.
But, and and reshuffled in a way that does not increase your nonconformity, so getting away from the water.
Yeah, so you stand those next to each other, it is true, we're increasing the footprint, based on the discussion we just had. It is also completely true, we've decreased the footprint, and that's why.
Yes, right, yes.
Store, and all of these commissions were before, it's never about increased to decrease, it's expansion, because that's, you you can kind of determine if you're expanding. Beyond, right, and then it is footprint as a unit. And then opposite, so they cancel each other out, we've, we've decreased it more than we've increased it. And we've increased in a direction that's conforming, or reducing nonconformity.
I don't disagree with that.
Okay.
So the footprint is the entire area of ground covered by the structure on a lot. Including but not limited to cantilevers and similar overhang extensions, as well as enclosed structures such as patios and decks.
Right, and let me just confirm, our calculations add all of that stuff in, when we are calculating the footprint, we understood. All of that stuff to be.
But there was, she raised a good question about the footprint in the kitchen area within the seventy-five feet. Where the red outline is where the footprint used to be.
Right.
He's making it.
That's Josh's.
But I'm just saying that she, that's a.
That's, yeah, that's what she's saying.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And I'm not saying I'm unhappy with the answer, I'm just saying, that's not my biggest problem. As, as I, I get that there's an argument to be made, that it's.
I think we're asking, we're pushing you on this point, because if it were one of your big problems, sure would be nice to know that now.
Absolutely, I get that.
So totally fine, you'd be working your way through it.
Yes.
And appreciate actually you doing that.
I came here saying, I'm gonna need some help. Right?
Are we helping?
Yes, yes, we'll get there, we may get there.
I just, I hope we get. Can we stop looking at this as either reconstruction or replacement for the relocation, because they're different. It looks like two different ways to look at it, if it's a relocation, it's both. You know, we're looking at.
You have to use the relocation standards to determine if reconstruction or replacement is allowed. It flips you back to that in addition to.
Tim, I would also recommend you check with D P. It's available for that.
Do, do we need it? I don't think we need it.
We do, within seventy-five feet, reconstruction or replacement. Of nonconformity structure.
Okay. Okay.
It's an act adjacent to a protected structure.
Yeah, I'm okay, I I hear.
And it's reconstruction, replacement of the structure on their permit by rule.
You, sorry, you see it as a, it's a N R P issue, that's what you're saying, it's not.
It's a P B R, it's. P B R, it's both, shoreline, because you have two different entities.
But they only relate zoning permits, you do.
Yeah, no, they do, permit by rules.
Those are N R P permits, or sworn.
Yeah.
They can issue those, yeah, okay, we could, yeah, we could look into that.
So like I said, if they don't approve it. They're not gonna.
Then, well, then. It doesn't matter, if they say no, then we're done. So that would.
I've seen it happen before.
It might be another helpful. Data point to provide you.
Yes, D P, if D P's happening. Mama is happy.
I think that's going loud and clear, thank you.
Because the one that I referenced earlier, D P did approve that. Unless I couldn't back.
Okay.
So we have a list of things, and we have some more reading to do also. Um, so would we like to continue this to a date certain, uh, how do you, how quickly do you think?
I need some time to prepare. Right, but.
We've got eight twenty-two, we've got nine five. Nine nineteen.
No, nine eleven. Second, that's a regular planning work.
Oh, meeting day, sorry, I'm.
Are we looking for a regular meeting day?
So the twenty-eighth and the eleventh.
What are the options?
And the twenty-fifth.
Well, you can do the twenty-fourth of August. If it's continued, then we don't have to cover the site.
So we have to have information.
The twenty-eighth of August, the twenty, the twenty-eighth of August.
Twenty, excuse me, twenty eighth of August, sorry.
Two weeks.
Two, two weeks.
Right, we would think.
Or you'd have to table it until you get all the information.
Can you continue to a date certain that isn't the next meeting? What if we pick a one of your September meetings?
The eleventh or the twenty-fifth.
You can do the September eleventh meeting.
You think that would be in the time for it, for you?
Nine eleven is an auspicious time to.
Yeah, that's bad juju. Really good question, is this something that is necessary to determine in this moment? The date?
Oh, no, it's up to you, actually, in some ways, that's up to you.
If you table it.
No, I mean, a continuance, like, for instance.
You can table it, you have to have the dates served.
Sure. All right.
See, because you've told the public who's not here, but you've told the public that there's a meeting coming, and here's the time, you don't need to renotice it, so. That, it's not a major issue, but it's simpler.
Right.
I guess I.
If not, you don't need to table, you can. Just table it, and then I'll come for your September eleventh meeting, then I have to notify you, which is fine.
And to clarify, so we're looking for, as far as, you know, what we wanna collect for this, we're looking for D P. That's the longest lead time, harbor support, that's shortest lead time. The. Shoreland impact of relocation. And shoreline impact of current design, that's mentally time.
Some astrology, something about the water, the water flow, the strong water.
That's, that's what I think.
Yeah.
So I was referring to. So I think, for example, we think D P would be, we have to, we have to put that together, that.
Yeah.
That's the first, I think. Like, my cat tells me it's the September twenty fifth, that was the alternate.
Let's do that, that's probably safest.
Yeah.
Does that have availability, Ken, on that date?
Which one?
Nine twenty-five, twenty-fifth.
Well, we have it, that's the, that's the application that he hasn't received.
Right, okay. I move, we, we continue this this matter until the twenty-fifth of September.
Sounds like it was, I'll show you the time.
So you can carry it to the twenty fifth?
To the twenty fifth, if that, that was what you wanted.
Yes, yes.
I'm trying to do what you want.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And we had a vote, correct?
Yeah, yes. Sorry to be persnickety.
Good job.
I still hope we get there.
So, thank you.
You ready, my great motion.
Hold on, uh, where's the?
Hold on.
Your agenda? Okay, so, okay, hold on. I don't think you have anything else. Uh, other? Anything under other? I have a turn, Nick. I move to a turn.
Second, that, Alan, favor, hi.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you very much.